Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 1st Plumton Board of Selectmen meeting. Welcome. To start with, just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and UT2 presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. And a reminder that the video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public document. Members of the print presses here, a member of the radio broadcast presses here. So, welcome, everyone. Just to briefly go over ground rules that we've decided on. Lately, we do try to practice patient urgency, a certain style of getting things done. Certainly, lots to do and lots to get done, but hopefully done in that style of some patients. We do try to keep the conversation as civil as possible. We do ask people to be concise so that everyone has a chance to speak. We do fully understand the seriousness of the task before us. And at the same time, if we are able to bring along some joy and laughter, we are glad to do that. The issues may come up that can't be fully addressed tonight. We do have the parking lot so that we don't lose that along the way and make sure that stuff is addressed when we're able to get to it. Probably, there are some other ground rules, but that's enough for now. We do have a dog complaint hearing at 7:00. We'll have a chance for a few more ground rules at that time. So, as been our custom lately, we will take just a couple of moments of silence to prepare in any way we'd like for the meeting ahead. Maybe not the least of which generating some gratitude for the opportunity we have to try to further the well-being of the town that we live in and adore. So, again, welcome, everyone. The agenda has been published. Are there any additional items that people would like up for consideration this evening? Okay, so off we go. It looks like we have a big, big agenda, I hope, and think that many of the items listed will be kind of brief. In the overview sense, we do have the dog complaint hearing at 7:00, and hopefully we can get through most of the other stuff before then. So, in we dive. First on the list, Town Personnel Policy and Procedure Documents. The draft introduction, and we appreciate it that Ms. Joy drafted that document. I was good with it with the one typo in the third paragraph that it was...
Adaptation?
Yes. It should be either adotation, if that's a word, I'm not sure, might have to check that.
Go with adopting.
That might be better.
Colleen will help you with that.
Yeah, Colleen. She's right on that. I did add...
Oh, she missed that one.
I did. Technology, too. So, I changed it to "The town's policies and benefits, as explained in this manual, may change from time to time as employment legislation, technology, and economic conditions dictate."
Great.
That's definitely up. Okay.
I think Colleen has something.
That's very minor. I would just put a period after guidelines and start a new sentence.
Okay.
Because it goes on kind of long. And then, looking at some other policies, they do seem to say something like "Nothing contained or implied creates a contract." And I don't know if we wanted to put that kind of word in here or not.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. So, I wrote down... Perfect. Okay.
You want me to read that?
Yeah, well, you can.
Okay. It says, "Nothing contained or implied by this manual or in this manual creates or shall be deemed to create or constitute a contractual obligation to employees on the part of the town of Plumton." I think that sounds good.
Okay, you want that in the very end?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, true. All right. So, do you want me to read the whole thing, and then we'll have everything?
Need to read it, or you want me to stat it?
Do you want me to read it out loud? We'll stat it. Okay. All right. So, I'll modify that, and I'll email it to you guys, just for you to take a look at. And then, do you want to vote it next week?
Uh-huh.
Or are you ready just to...
Or we can vote it now as amended.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we accept it as amended.
One second.
All those in favor?
All right. So, I'll give you the clean copy.
All right, so that's issue number one. Next, any feedback on the sections 1.1, 1.2, 1.3 that we published? Nope. Anybody hear anything? So, they are adopted. And then, the last issue on this subject is vetting by town council.
Well, do we need to look at the whole thing first? Don't we want to take a look at the whole book?
And Dale sent us everything, not as 10 documents or whatever it is, 12 documents.
Yeah, that all goes in there.
Do we want to combine them as one and then send them...
Well, into a book form. A lot of them are sort of tried and true stuff that's been done, you know, everywhere. But I think at the end, I mean, if you want to pass it off to town council for their...
I think what we had talked about is preferably, hopefully, as best we could direct, a really brief reading without getting too...
Right.
...wound up. We don't need a $5,000 reading, but especially the sentences like you want to add, I'm sure. That was very legally orderable. It was really good.
Yeah, a lot of breakfast.
So, what do we need to do? Do we need to put it all together before we send it to town council?
I think there's probably some other additions you probably want to make to it in terms of, I don't know.
Well, yeah, don't you want to get like the Family Leave Act in there?
Yeah.
And some of those federal things? Okay.
Family Leave Act goes in, and then you add the established policies for the town already, sexual harassment policy, those sorts of things. Those go in as sort of an addition. And I'd given you originally the table of contents that contained a lot of things. I don't, we haven't done them all, I mean...
There's quite a few.
Yeah, we have. It'd be up to the board to see how much farther we wanted to, how much farther you wanted to go at this time. I mean, you can always modify it later.
I think we've kind of decided we're done, and I think the next two steps are maybe just pulling it together into one document.
I'll make it into a book for you.
And if you could make it into a book, we'd take a look at it, and then one of us just approached town council next week?
Perfect.
And we should think between now and then which one of us wants to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you'll put it into, merge into a single document?
Yeah. Christine's going to send me the introduction, and then we'll put it together with the parts that we've got, and everything will be labeled and...
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we had follow-ups to work with, and first on the list is, I guess we'll go to it next, I guess, is the proposed marijuana grow facility public input. So, I put that on the agenda in large part to, for us to discuss what process, if any, on moving forward or making decisions. We have had a fascinating week, we, the selectmen, in terms of a lot of contact with the public, in terms of phone conversations, in terms of emails, and, well, I think we've heard a lot of very strong comment against and some strong comment in favor as well. I do want to just make one comment. There was a flyer sent out, I guess pretty much everyone knows and received with selectmen's names at the bottom. Unfortunately, the flyer did not make very clear who was sending the flyer. In fact, it wasn't signed. And I've heard from a bunch of people that misread this flyer and felt like it was the selectmen that had sent the flyer. So, I would just make a plea to people that are sending out flyers that they be kind of careful when they throw around the Board of Selectmen names, phone numbers, and emails, that they make clear that maybe comments to the selectmen are fine, but that this document wasn't from the selectmen. I've heard from a bunch of people that were really irritated at the selectmen for sending out a document like this. So, I don't, we spent, I think, an hour and three-quarters on this last week. There's certainly plenty going on in all kinds of media. I don't know if anybody... Shall we open it up to the audience for a few brief comments before we discuss a little what our process would be?
Yes, if you have something that you haven't said before. We've heard it on the phone, we've heard it in person, we've heard it by email. If there's something new...
The chief has forwarded them a couple of times, too.
Did the chief's what?
The chief has forwarded them a couple of times and trying to talk to them.
For me, I was just interested in what the process was, like how, what's the next step for you folks to make a decision? And is there a timeframe involved?
Anyone that speaks, please, your name and street address for the media.
Maureen Doyle, 88 Ring Road.
And I think maybe that's what we're going to discuss tonight, what the process is. The process so far, our process this week has been wading through email after email and phone call after phone call.
I just have a question. My name is Dan Doyle. I live at 88 Ring Road. To me, I think one of the key issues is, does the right to farm, I don't really call it an amendment of policy...
Bylaw.
Bylaw, thank you. Does that supersede the local bylaws of Plumton? And is that something, I guess, the town council is trying to sift through? Because it would seem to be an important way to go if you're following.
So, I can make a couple of comments on that. Number one, certainly, if this project were to go ahead, if the selectmen were to approve it or non-oppose, the applicant would have to go through all the permitting, and one of the permitting would certainly be zoning, and that's where a lot of that would come up. And I have heard from another people that do wonder about zoning, and we wonder about the right to farm bylaw. And that probably is more in the purview of the zoning enforcement officer and potentially the zoning board of appeals along the way. It is one of the things that I am wrestling with and wrestling with this decision, is Plumton is a right-to-farm town. We do not live in a residential area, or any of us. We all live in a residential agricultural area. And Plumton does have a right-to-farm bylaw. The purpose of the right-to-farm bylaw, whether one likes it or doesn't like it, is to clear, and in fact, the words in the bylaw are very explicit about that, to clearly state that preferential treatment is given to farming. And that preferential treatment is given to farmers to do their, the thing they do, even if some of those things aren't exactly what other residents like. I mean, the reason that there's a sign at all the borders to town is sort of to warn people that it is a right-to-farm town and that farming is a major industry and is given preferential treatment.
Sharon Houseley, 86 Ring Road. The town bylaws specifically state on page 62, they reference medical marijuana, and they state that it's not allowed in any zone other than the business district. And in section 9.5.5, page 62, clearly states, "No medical marijuana facility shall be located on a lot which sits next to a residential zoning district." That's the Plumton bylaws. Now, 40A is a state law. However, if medical marijuana fell under 40A, the state would not require that they get a special permit or license to farm it. So, clearly, the state does not feel that medical marijuana falls under 40A.
I mean, I think it's an issue, and it's an issue that would have to be worked through, zoning, zoning board of appeals.
Would be brief. Houseley, 86 Ring Road. Just to continue on that point, the right to farm, does that include every conceivable crop? Could you grow poppies? Could you, um...
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. But does it cover every conceivable crop on the outright, or like Sharon had said, there are specific application processes for certain crops that are obviously not covered by 40A, or else you wouldn't need that specific application process? So, I just think we wanted to consider...
I think if we got there, it's beyond me.
Can I make one additional comment? I would like to invite you three and anybody else, the chief of police, to our homes, to the woods, to see the area and why we have the security concerns that we have. I sent you all a list of probably 15 articles of headlines from the last year, year and a half, of medical marijuana farms that had been robbed at gunpoint, and why we feel the security concerns are very real. And I would love for each and every one of you to come and see the road that borders our property and the path, the deeded path that cannot be blocked, that crosses the Doyle's property as well as a number of others. So, please, you know, we're home all the time. Please call and come see why we have the concerns we have.
I'd like to do that. Send me your phone number, and set it up for this week.
It's in my email to you.
Or, send it again, because the email pile is getting large.
Sharon, you available tomorrow?
Absolutely.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
And the media is welcome to come as well.
Would it be an open meeting?
No, we'd go separately.
Yeah, I can't. I have to work, unfortunately.
Sir.
Yes, Harry Wyble, 68 Center Street. I'd like to speak mainly towards the revenue aspect of this. I was here and the other night, and it didn't sound like there was going to be much of a substantial revenue to the town. On the other hand, it sounded like there might be some cost. I'm a senior. I'm on fixed income. Right now, the taxes, my property taxes, take 25% of my social security. I can't afford any more cost. And I think there are quite a few seniors in this town of appeals anyway.
Any other comments?
Dawn Hastings Zilly, 108 Ring Road. The signs, I don't ever look at them as a warning, like, stay away, we might be growing marijuana, like, and so I'm not being facetious when I say that, like, hearing you say that, hey, warning, this is a farm, you know, right-to-farm community. I don't look at them as a warning. I look at them as, hey, this is Plumton. It's a right-to-farm community. And never once, as I've driven by those signs, which were put up after I moved in, did I consider that one of those things to farm would be marijuana. So, I don't, when I, when people that come to visit me see those signs, they're not seeing them as it's a warning, this is a farming community, and we'll defer to the farmers. It's not how they see them. I think they see it as, hey, that's cool, this is a farming community. So, I just wanted to say that.
So, we as a board have been collecting information, we're continuing to collect information. I look forward to going out and visiting the site, and we know there are probably 30 or 60 days before we have to make a final decision. Even though...
Mark, can we just talk about why, the reasons why you're choosing to support it? What, you know, what's the benefit to the town? Because I'm not clear on what that is, why you're choosing to support this.
Well, actually, I haven't chosen to support it. At the last meeting, I said I was weighing it, and I still am weighing it. Initially, I was pretty excited about the project, and I still am excited, and I am seriously, though, weighing all the negative input we've had, even receiving an email criticizing for thinking that this was a complex issue. The reason I potentially could be for it is I think that there is potential for most of the concerns to be assuaged, number one. Number two, we are a right-to-farm community. And number three, most importantly, and I think especially because the number-one thing we hear around town as Board of Selectmen is the crushing burden of the tax rate, particularly on senior citizens. We hear that all the time. I take that very seriously. We have worked very hard to look for other ways to limit that in terms of regionalization, in terms of efficiency of town government. And this looks like an opportunity for a fair amount of revenue. As much as I absolutely adore our police chief, respect him, think he's probably the most quality person in this, in town government that we hire, I don't fully agree that we necessarily are going to need another policeman. And I think that the numbers that have been bandied about that might be the income for the town may be low, and that there's potential for even more of that. So, to not overly ramble, the reason it's still open to consideration for me is that I think a lot of the concerns can be assuaged, and this is a real opportunity for a substantial amount of money for a small town. Rather than a debate, right now...
I just want to say one thing.
Okay, I'll let that go. I think we, right now, just want to work through our process along the way.
You know, as a resident of Ring Road, Maureen Doyle of Ring Road, I sort of feel like the residents of Ring Road's property values are going to be devalued. And I get the impression from talking to people who are for it that they just consider that collateral damage, that the town needs additional revenue, this is unwanted development in our neighborhood, and just suck it up. Your house isn't going to be worth what you hoped it would be. And that, to me, is really disturbing. That disturbs me about how my neighbors feel about being neighborly. So, I don't know how you could say that everything is going to be assuaged. I don't think, well, until you see the property, the safety issue is still a concern. Maybe the smell can be resolved, maybe the use of electricity, the water, all of that can be taken care of. But I think that's going to be a hard thing to convince us it isn't going to happen.
I would take substantial issue with your implication that any of us that are at least considering this project are cavalier, cavalierly not being concerned about the neighbors.
Not you. Not you three. Input that I've heard from other people living in this town.
Okay.
I have a couple of things, and I don't know if, they may end up being rambling, but first of all, I'm really concerned about property owner's rights. And I know, I'm balancing that in your rights and his rights. His rights to do what he wants to do, which is legal and possibly within our zone. You know, this is something that has to be hashed out, but until that's done, we can assume that he can do that. So, he has a right to do things on his property. What if he wanted to put in, you know, a really smelly pig farm? I mean, it's just...
We wouldn't be here. We need to be honest.
Maybe. Or, you know, maybe the other owner, oh, excuse me, the other neighbors who don't care about this would care about that. I mean, agriculture is agriculture, and I think property owners' rights enter the picture. In addition, I have a really, really big issue with not in my backyard. In Massachusetts, we voted to allow medical marijuana. We can't keep saying, yes, we want solar power, yes, we want this, yes, we want that, yes, medical marijuana is good, but don't do it here, do it in the inner city, they don't care. You know, I just think that that's something that we need to consider. And let me just finish, and then, because I'm going to lose my train of thought. And then, you know, we are talking a lot about the income, and yes, the town needs income, and yes, there may be expenses. But really, I was talking to a former selectman, and he said that actually shouldn't even enter the discussion. The discussion is whether this person has the right to do it or not. And if we want to support it, then we can pull these other things into it. But I just, you know, if somebody was entering, if somebody was building a bank, you know, banks get robbed all the time. Are we going to worry about an extra police officer on duty for that? You know, it all balances, and we're the ones that have to find out which side the scale is heavier.
So, I'm...
Can I say a couple of things first?
Of course.
Okay. So, the difference with this project with, from the liquor store, from the gun store, from the bank, from any other building, is that the Commonwealth of Mass has asked us for our input. They have asked us to support this. Usually, this comes through as an unfunded mandate, where they, the law is written, and they say, here it is, deal with it. But they, because they know this is not right for every community, are allowing communities the opportunity for input. So, I think that they have opened the door for us to consider the cost to us for an additional police officer, how it's going to impact the neighbors. They require that this complies with our bylaws in order for us to support this. I think it doesn't comply with the bylaws. My reading of the right to farm is that the farmer's rights don't necessarily trump the neighbors. And the way that it's written, it's almost that people who are new to town, you can't complain about an existing farming operation. But this is a new farming operation. Also, in here, the, in 4.1, which is in the general provisions, it says, "In the agricultural, residential, business, and light manufacturing districts, no building, premises, or land shall be used for any purpose detrimental, injurious, or offensive to the neighborhood, whether in the same or adjoining districts." And I think that based on the fact that the neighbors are not happy with this, that that is a violation of the bylaws. So, I have, that's why I feel like it's appropriate for us to talk about this, to gather as much information as we can, so that we can make a decision that's best for our community. And then I had a couple of other things, too. The agreement that was presented to us by Jeff is, as far as I can see, not negotiable. He has offered us $20,000. I don't have it in front of me, because I actually gave it to you. I believe for the first two or three years, yeah, could I see it? And then, $40,000, a cap of $40,000 for the remainder of the term. So, that's all we're going to be getting. It's not negotiable. If we agree to this, that's the amount of money we're going to be getting. Also, there's no local oversight. We, once the project is completed, it is under the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Health. So, if there's issues with odor, issues with anything else, there's a, I think there's an 800 number in here for us to call to report it to Department of Public Health. The fees don't cover the associated cost to the town, which we've already talked about. I think the location is not appropriate. The neighbors obviously are not happy with it. It's a narrow, windy road, which can be dicey for the police responding to an emergency, plus it's this narrow, windy road that he's driving on to deliver the marijuana. So, you know, that's not super safe for him either. There's no dispensary agreement in place. They, he has not been invited to bid. The fees are based on pounds, not gross revenue, with a $40,000 cap, which isn't, I don't think, to our best benefit. Neighbors strongly oppose. I feel that it violates the bylaws. That's just my take on it. So, those, I felt, were pretty solid cons. In my unknowns is the odor. Is this going to be a cash-only business? What's the effect on the property value? Is this going to be a target for criminal activity? It has the potential to jeopardize federal funding. There's no, he has no experience in this endeavor. It could fail. So, we've hired the cop, and now we're getting no money from Jeff. And once again, this, who enforces this? If he doesn't pay up, who enforces that? The 40A is an unknown. The 40A is an unknown, so we would definitely need to get clarification on that. This is going to increase the workload on the Plimpton Police Department. The lighting bylaw, the, this requires, you know, satisfactory lighting. It doesn't spell out what it is. If it's in violation of our bylaws, you know, how does that work? And if this whole thing requires a special permit, it really should be in front of the ZBA, not our board. But that's something we need to work out with council. I'm concerned about the environmental impact and the water usage. But those were all unknowns. So, I had a lot of questions.
One more, Art, and then we're probably going to have to move on.
A question came up from a resident to me this past weekend. What about the waste? The entire plant is not used. And is there something, and I admit, I have not read the state laws yet, that requires the town to take the waste?
No, it just said that it had to be ground up so it wasn't usable and go to a DEP facility. So, I guess, because you said we don't take compost, so it wouldn't be able to go to our dump. I don't know, where, he'd have to dispose it somewhere else. And the bylaw says it can't be burned, so we couldn't burn it. So, I'm not sure what he would do with the waste. But I believe it can't go in our dump because we don't accept compost material or commercial waste.
So, I'm going to make a proposal to this board. We are still collecting information. At least one of us or two of us are undecided. I think we'll be collecting more information by phone, by email. Keep those cards and letters coming. We're interested. We're listening. There is some research I'd like to do. I'd like to talk to Mr. Randall again. I'd like to visit the neighbors' places. I think we, what I'm going to propose is that we simply continue to collect information. We are meeting next week. There is not a meeting the week after. So, I'm going to suggest that we take this up again in three weeks, after we've all had a chance to ruminate some more. So, that would be the meeting on February 22nd. And actually, it takes the pressure off some of you guys. You don't have to show up every week. We're not going to clandestinely do anything along the way. But unless something else comes up, I'll put this on the agenda again for the 22nd, and we'll just keep at it.
Okay.
One quickie, and one quickie here. We have to try to do some other town business as well.
You mentioned about assuaging our concerns and about the security. What do you have in mind that's going to make us feel safer and more protected? What are you thinking in terms of the security? What will it look like?
It's not even so much for me to say. It's for me to be assured that Mr. Randall has all those things covered. And again, I, look, the selectmen are one piece in this. Anywhere along the way, in the initial process or three years from now, Board of Health, zoning, the whole gang still has authority, and there will still be recourse along the way.
I'm not feeling very assuaged right now, if you know what I mean. I thought you had maybe an idea of what it would look like, or some kind of security ideas that would make us feel safer and not have this be such an active issue with it.
Okay. Last one, and then we're going to-
Did she defer to me?
You guys go, one, two, three, shoot, and one of you go for it.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of reiterate something Christine brought up. I've heard several times now that it's very likely or possible this will get hung up somewhere else down the line. This is, at this point, in this stage of the application, is really the only point where the will of the town, the will of the townspeople, the will of the selectmen actually have any pull. After this, it's just a straight legal matter. And it's going to be whether or not the lawyers can prove that 40A does apply, does not apply, the state follow the guidelines, which we already know what they are. At no other point than this, does the town really have the ability to stop this from going forward for any reason. Any reason brought up after this is going to have to be a legal reason.
Exactly right. And that's why we're doing what we're doing.
This is a point where it could be, maybe it's not the best location. Maybe it's not, I don't want to say profitable, but, you know, financially-
As far as, I understand the not in your backyard, and I don't think that's what this is about. I think the school being there, you know, personally, if this was the industrial park, I'd have far less of an issue. Unfortunately, this, the town isn't zoned for it to be an industrial park. The only place the town's zoned for is business. But as far as owners' rights and what they can do on their own property, if this goes through, there can't be any home daycares in any of the neighbors' homes. There can't be Girl Scout meetings. There can't be Boy Scout meetings. None of those residents in the immediate vicinity will be able to use their home for those things. So, if this goes through, you're compromising what the neighbors will be able to do because-
Because the state doesn't allow-
The state doesn't allow that.
And corn and tomatoes, don't do that.
And what?
Corn and tomatoes and pigs don't do that.
Okay. To be continued. Appreciate it. Just a quick note. A couple of people of mine have shown up for the dog here, and we had originally scheduled that for 6:30. I put it on the agenda for 7:00. So, if people are sitting anxiously waiting for that, it's coming up in a few minutes. My error. Okay. So, everyone all right that we move on to some other business?
Yeah. So, 2:22. Do you want to have it out of time? Because they're probably all going to show.
Again?
Again. You're very popular.
Yeah.
I don't know. You want to do like 6:30?
6:45, so we can actually get some work.
All right, 6:45. All right. Do you, is it your intention for us to vote on this at some point, that either yea or nay, and just, got the chips, okay?
It is. Whether, I don't know if it will be that night. I doubt it will.
Okay. Because I think that I actually have some other legal questions that, okay, will come up before now and then.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's just to gather more information and see where we go from there. And I mean, I certainly heard from a couple of citizens, like, don't rush into this. Give us time. They'll get more ammunition. Both, each side will get more ammunition. All right.
But, you know, that's not fair to Jeff. It's not fair to the residents. We can't just string this along. I think that we need to make a decision and be done with this.
Yeah. No, I agree. Though Jeff did make clear that he thought, in the process that he's working through, that at least 30 or 60 days. We don't want this-
He said 40 to 60 days.
We don't want this to drag on forever.
Right. Okay. Very good.
Okay. So, repairs to the fire truck was next. So, we got a letter from the fire chief, I think last week.
Yes.
Major pump failure on fire engine one. Not sure how much it would cost. Hard to find the parts. Might overrun the repair budget, et cetera, et cetera. Turns out they were able to find a rebuilt pump. It was well under the repair budget. There's still money left in the repair budget, so that issue for the moment is taken care of.
Very nice.
Okay. Much more thorny. Snow removal at the library and police station. There has been-
Historical society.
And?
PHS, yeah.
Okay. Dale, were you able to find out anything on this? Some of this, I wondered if some of this was the custodian, Darrell was away, and normally doesn't, and no one else was assigned.
Normally, he does it for the townhouse, not for the library. I spoke with Debbie Batson, and I said that the library should make arrangements to have someone come in and shovel for them the, what they need to have shoveling. Highway department, Jimmy Mulcahy, he doesn't have anybody available. He can do the big stuff, but not the, not the hand shoveling. Now, it gets into a personnel slash budget issue as to, I mean, you know, so far, it's not, well, so far this year, it's been virtually no expense. And I mean, but last year was very expensive, obviously, because we had a lot of snow. So, there should be some, something put in place, or just inside their budgets allowed to do that, to hire the casual labor to do that amount of shoveling. Historical society building, that's a building that we lease to the Historical Society. They're a private organization, so that would come under the, under the heading of the Board of Selectmen.
Well, they pay to maintain it, don't they?
We provide snow removal, or do they?
Who plows down there?
I honestly don't know. I would assume we do.
Is it John here? Do you know?
Jim will pay his plows.
But he doesn't shovel?
He doesn't shovel.
Okay.
He doesn't have personnel to shovel. I mean, he has personnel to drive trucks, but he doesn't-
We'll have to talk to him about that.
All right. So, Darrell does here.
Yeah, he has been doing here as far as-
Does he do the police station? Because that was-
Yes, he does.
Okay. Okay.
All right. So, Darrell does police in this building. So, the two that we have to be concerned about are library and PHS. And theoretically, it seems to me, I don't know what the answer is, that part of this is budgeting for next year, and theoretically, they have to put it in their budget for snow removal.
Right. And I think they probably need to, you know, handle that on their own. Now, there's, you know, there's an issue over, you know, hiring casual labor, that sort of stuff. What's the rate, and so on and so forth. And then you get into, what's the liability, on whose side? And it gets, it gets thick.
Does Jim plow at the library? Do you know, John?
Yes.
Yes, I believe he does.
Then why doesn't Darrell just do all of these locations? That way, we don't have to deal with this. And if Darrell's on vacation, we'll have to make sure that there's backup.
Well, I mean, we, I mean, we could do that. I mean, it would obviously be an increase in the amount of work he's doing, so there'd be an increase in that budget.
Right. But then they wouldn't have to deal with the labor. We've already got him.
Okay. So, we need to then include, it seems like one of the issues is, aside from this year, next year. So, if it's Darrell, then we need to include in the budget process coming up with FinCom enough money for snow removal from Darrell.
And I can add money.
It would seem to me that it would make more sense to get a little more money for Jim. I mean, he's there plowing. You have, you plow, your guy jumps onto the other side of the cab and shovels. I mean, that's what happens in some cases in the private sector. I mean, that's what happens at my brother's motel on the Cape.
But he has one person on a truck, so it's not, I mean, and he's, and they're, and his people are plowing the big vehicles. I mean, they're, you know, they're not, they're not using small vehicles.
Right. I'm just saying that maybe the casual labor person should be under his purview instead of each-
You mean, instead of Darrell having, Jim have somebody that goes to these locations and shovels?
Well, I mean, you've got an issue. If there's a lot of snow, I mean, and you're going to, I mean, I'm not even sure that Darrell would like to do that under his job description.
I don't think he would.
First of all, it's a lot of work. Second of all, and I mean, he's a tough guy, but he's, but he's also, you know, I mean, he's okay for the custodial work, but I mean, that's a pretty, that's a pretty strenuous operation for anybody. I'm not sure that, you know, I'm not skirting around that, but I mean, it's a fact. I wouldn't want to-
We don't want Darrell to get hurt.
And I'm younger than Darrell.
Could you, could you talk to Jim and see if he'd be willing to put in his budget something for that snow removal for the rest of this year? If Darrell isn't doing that stuff, I'll shovel, and I'll shovel for free, just to get through the rest of this year.
Well, yeah. Jake Jacobson did some, you know, shoveling for the library, and I mean, he-
Yeah, but he was, I think there was some concern about pay on that, so I'll take care of the library and PHS.
I mean, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Jimmy about it and see. Because, I mean, he's hiring, he's hiring outside help to do plowing, and he may be able to find somebody to do that as well.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Okay. Okay? And you'll let us know on that?
Yep.
Perfect. I'll split it with you. I'll do PHS.
Wow. You guys are earning your buck this year.
Across the street, I can hardly avoid it.
I'm not going to do many of them.
But we'll be calling you to let you know that we're doing it.
Go for it. Send me a picture.
Some of us do sort of work for a living, so it may not be quite as quick. But, and I might be out here doing it at 3:00 in the morning. All right. Town car maintenance expenses. Would you guys be willing to let this sit for a week? That's enough thorny stuff.
I can add to that. I mean, it's, at this point, the, I spoke to the chief. The fire department has been maintaining the vehicle, and they have agreed to maintain it through this fiscal year. What you need to discuss is who maintains it, you know, who are you going to ask to maintain it next fiscal year, and how, and how it's used, whether it's in his budget or someone else's budget.
All right. Maybe then we can decide on that. Should we, should we ask the chief to put it, the fire chief, to leave it in his budget or put it in the budget?
Well, who's using it? Assessors. The assessors are using it?
Yeah. The assessors use it.
They, they want to control the schedule of it.
Well, then, why don't they pay to maintain it?
That's what I would think.
Yeah, but others use it as well. And we're going to get into this curve war.
Council on Aging uses it. And Council on Aging also is going to have to add to their budget maintenance for their van in this coming year, because it's getting where it's going to need, you know, it's going to need PM. So-
Can we hold it?
Okay. That's next week. We'll have something to look for.
Come up with a plan.
Something to look forward to next week. All right. Board of Selectmen 2017 budget requests.
Done, except for the question of, do you want to make an additional request for council?
Council.
I mean, it's, it's, right now, I'm putting in a level funded, not leveled service, level funded budget for the Board of Selectmen, with the exception of whatever wage and personnel decides to throw in, because my contract is subject to that, and Darrell's is, and Bree's is. So, but that's, whatever that ends up being.
I could not get any information on fixed cost legal. I had heard that it was happening, but I was never able to get ahold of Rich Bowen. He's not working where I thought he was, and he never responded to me, so.
I don't have a lot of experience with it. I mean, generally, you can pull them in on retainer, and then you just, then you, by contract, determine what's covered under the retainer, and then you go, you know, you go out from there. Although, the big items that we've had for council have been issues where you would probably have to go to special counsel anyway. I mean, we have a law firm that has all of those people on staff. I went back through the years, and other than last year, and possibly, but other than last year, we haven't overrun that budget by an awful lot. But we did last year, and, you know, we could, I mean, we could this year. It just depends on, you never know what the issues are going to be. So, I know we increased the amount in FinCom reserve this last year. And that's probably the place to go, if you don't want to include it in the budget, if they don't want to lock it up in professional or legal.
My, I think someday the fixed costs make sense. I think we have enough on our plate this year.
Yeah. Can we just level fund it?
I think level funding is maybe modeling some good behavior, knowing that every once in a while, it takes one issue to come up that suddenly blows a quarter of the budget, and then we simply have to keep FinCom aware. I think we have been pretty darn fastidious and being pretty darn frugal with this. So, I'd be fine with level funding.
Level funding, you can.
And actually, for future reference, I know a lawyer on the Cape who is also a selectman of the Cape, and I'll give him a call and see if he-
That would be great. Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. Okay. Next is Silver Lake Regional School land sale warrant article. I think I shared that with all of you. And I think maybe we can table that for a while. It was originally scheduled, but Kingston was going to vote, I think, special last week or this week, and they put it off, probably, I don't know why they put it off, but sort of puts the heat on us now, because we'll be the first to vote.
Yeah, I think they, right.
But we'll have to look at that. But they did give us a sample. It looked okay to me, and obviously, we'll have to have town council vet it.
They're willing to come and make a presentation and talk about what they're planning on doing and all of that. And I don't know, in fact, if it will come up, but that tri-town meeting of Finance Committee and Selectmen is next Thursday.
Let's see what happens this Thursday. Yeah. Okay. Notes on the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting. That was me. Enough came up in the last 10 days that I wasn't able to pull that together, but I couldn't resist getting for each of my colleagues on either side of me.
Oh, that's beautiful. I needed a bigger bag. Thanks. Notes.
And it's right ready.
Thank you.
Most importantly, though, is the balsa wood planes with the propeller.
Oh, wow. That is special.
They were giving those away. Seemed like you guys each needed one of those.
Thank you.
Still make those.
Remember I said that the ground rules bring along a little joy in land maintenance every once in a while.
Everybody's going to be a selectman now.
I know.
Oh, please.
Parks are amazing.
Come do it.
Totally outweighs any negatives.
All right. All right. So, the next one's mine. Request for time with town council regarding creating a future town administrator position and vetting the CPC annual town meeting article. It's a little bit ahead of time on both of these. I honestly am feeling like I have so- I honestly am feeling like I have so much on my plate over the next six or eight weeks, and I just wanted to get through these, so I'm hoping you would allow some quick time on the CPC article that's coming up, mainly because I'd like to check with town council before the CPC meeting in early March, in case there's any problem with that. I think that should be very brief. The thing, I've drafted the thing, and it should go clearly. So that'd be number one. So I make a motion. I have a few minutes with town council on the CPC article.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So the second one takes a little more conversation. I don't wanna get into a big conversation on a future town administrator position, but my particular question is rather narrow one. Dale has been a part-time town coordinator. I think you're in your fifth year now, right?
She's like ten, but she's young.
Who's counting?
Has one more year after this. There has been conversation along the way that at some point, it would be time for the town to have a full-time town administrator, and I have heard some discussion or some recommendation that one way to create that position, if we were gonna think about creating it, is to create the job description and bring it before town meeting this year, and then if we were gonna consider that next year, to fund it next year. So my really narrow question to town council is whether that's necessary or not, and I think I could have a very brief conversation with Alana and better understand what the process would be.
Yeah, I think that's exactly the process.
Sure.
So I make a motion that I'd be able to spend a little bit of time with Alana on that one.
Okay, and then you'll report back on those?
I surely will.
Okay, all right.
So someone second now?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Lastly, it's almost seven o'clock. I just wanted to throw this out, not even for a lot of discussion, but just that it's gonna need to be thought about. It is quite likely that later this year, Area 58 Studio will be ready to wire one of our meeting rooms. There'll be three cameras up in the ceiling, so wired for sound. We're gonna have to choose which room. I knew I'd, I do get that kind of look. I think we love this room. It's fine, except when we get a big crowd. I'm just putting the word out there. We have tons of time on this. It's gonna be challenging to decide which one to do. It'll be very nice when it happens, because the camera will be all set up. The videographer will just sit in the back with the little buttons and won't have to be turning the camera around. The sound will be much, much better.
And we can't do both?
Correct.
Are they paying, or, I mean, this is part of the contract. They're paying.
Yeah, no, that's part of-
I would get a cost to do both. I mean, you know, it, I mean, it's a capital expense for the town, but if you do both rooms, then you have, you can actually have two simultaneous meetings or other meetings that are requested or required to be televised.
I don't know how we could do both. I mean, you know, we're dividing it up between the three towns, and there's money in the budget and money through the capital money that Comcast gives us for one room per town.
Only they're gonna cost it, so I mean, I would just ask them to cost it both ways and see. I mean, after that, it's capital. The additional is a capital request.
Well, it would be a capital request from us.
From us, to do an additional room. I mean, I just think, you know, the, it gives you a lot of flexibility.
That would be nice.
Maybe what we'd end up having to do, I doubt, we wouldn't be able to, I don't think we could pull that together for this year's town meeting, so we might still have to decide which to do first.
Yeah, it makes sense to have the other room. I hate the other room passionately. But I think that it just would make more sense to wire that room.
Okay, let's keep thinking about it. All right. That's that. All right, so we have a few odds and ends, but it's seven o'clock, so let's go to the...
Dog hearing?
Yeah. This might be an appropriate time if some feel like they wanna move on. Please feel free.
Thank you all for coming, too. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, let's see, the Plington Animal Control Officer is here. Is someone from Halifax here? Oh, hey, how do you do? And Mr. Place, and Mrs. Place, how do you do? All right. Yeah, and representatives from the Winnetuxas School?
Here we are. Hello, hello, hello.
Okay.
Members of the board, I've received a signed complaint for complaints to reside on the town of Halifax. They request that the town of Plington take action to completely halt reoccurring incidents of worrying persons in the town of Halifax by a dog owned by Mr. and Mrs. Edward D. Place Jr., who reside at 203 West Street in the town of Plington. All parties have been summoned by certified mail, and I believe our present addressed the complaint.
Thank you, Frank. That acts as a good introduction, and let me just say a few things about how we'll go ahead with the public hearing. There's a basic framework and a four-step process we need to go through. The steps are notice, and then opening the hearing, and then collecting evidence, and then deliberating and deciding. So there are a few things I need to say. I don't wanna drag this out, but based on complaints that we have received, we did go ahead and schedule this public meeting. We, I sent certified letters to the school, to Halifax Board of Selectment Animal Control, to Plington Animal Control, and to the owners of the dogs. Everyone received those, interestingly enough, except the owners of the dogs. We sent them a couple weeks ago. It turns out, as I understand it from the post office, that albeit it's 203 West Street, I addressed it as Plington, and apparently, your mail comes from Halifax. So we got that back, or understood that to be the case last week. We did have Frank Bush go out and speak with Mrs. Place and let her know about this. He also put a flyer, and I spoke to Mr. Place on Sunday, just to make clear that we did make every effort for public, for public, for proper public notice. All right. So the way we need to start a public hearing is by a reading of of that notice, and... Actually, I think what I'm gonna do at this point, I wanna hand out a packet of documents to my fellow selectmen, to Bree, to Dale, and then I'll give one to Frank, to Noreen. Forgive me, I lost my shoe. And, yeah, and I guess those, this should go to the places. So that's a bunch of documents associated with this. I'm gonna ask Bree, the town, the selectman's assistant, to keep a list of documents. These are numbed, they are lettered A, B, C, D, so that we can, that can become a permanent part of the record. So the first page that I just passed out is the dog complaint received from the town coordinator in Halifax, and the complaint listed is that the dog is constituting a nuisance by entering into neighboring property and acting in a threatening way. Document B is a complaint from the owners of the Winnetuxas Children's Place, also claiming that the dog constitutes a nuisance entering neighbor property, acting in a threatening way. Document number C is the certified letter, which states that we are having a public meeting tonight, states the time and place. I think that'll be good enough for that. Document D is a letter from the Winnetuxas Children's Home dated January 2015, a year ago, listing concerns and problems with the dog showing up there. Document E is December 9th of this year, a letter from the owner of the Winnetuxas School, again documenting concerns. Letter F is from Frank Bush, the Halifax-
Charlie Seelig.
Pardon?
Charlie, it's from Charlie.
I'm sorry, it's from Charlie Seelig, again describing his concerns. Letter G is from Charlie, again further describing concerns. And then the last one is H, which is from Koppelman and Page, which lists definitions on nuisance and dangerous dogs and how we can proceed. So that's just to make clear what all the documents are. Almost done with this. The ground rules for tonight. Testimony will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter of the hearing. Only one person permitted to speak at a time. All discussion will go through the chair. All parties will be expected to conduct themselves civilly. Arguments between the parties will not be permitted. The proceedings should and are being recorded, and the recording preserved. So, last thing in opening the hearing is, for anyone that's gonna testify tonight, we need them to be sworn in. So anyone that's gonna make comment for or against the situation, if you'll raise your right hand, actually, if you'll stand and raise your right hand, that would include Frank as well, and swear that the testimony you are about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And if all of you say, "I do." Thank you, okay. So, step three, collecting in for, collecting evidence. This will go in two phases. We're gonna hear evidence about the violation from town staff or complaining parties, and then we'll collect evidence in defense of the dog and the owners of the dog. Each person that speaks, please identify yourself by stating your name and address. So the first people to speak will be the complainants, and I guess maybe that should be Noreen, the Halifax Animal Control Officer first. The way this'll go, the people describing the complaint, if there are any questions in the audience or the owners of the dog, they may question, and then we will question, and then we'll go on to the next complaintant along the way.
On 12/9 of 15, we got a complaint about a loose dog. This was not the first case. That was 8:25 in the morning. I did end up making contact on 12/11 with the dog owner. Let him know that the dog was supposed to be inside and on a leash at all times. Let's see, there are several other callouts for a dog running loose. I have indeed impounded the said dog, the complaining dog, on 12/22 of 14. The dog was impounded. It was taken to Halifax Animal Control, where the owners did reclaim the dog with a $43 fine for running loose and impound fee and avoiding fee. And this was later referred over to Frank Bush and let him know that the dog should be licensed in Plinton.
You have a question?
No, no, you said, is there a leash law in Plinton?
No. Okay. So the concern at the time was the dog was at the school. And did you witness threatening behavior, or...
When I got there, no, the dog was running loose. It was just running loose. I didn't see any aggression, but at that time, the dog was heading back towards its property in Plinton.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Bush?
The first complaint of this animal was indeed in 2014. Upon the release of the animal to the owners, it was placed under restraining order. The specific complaint was Article 21, Section 2, being unlicensed, and Article 21, Section 11F, chasing people walking on a public way. The complaint dates were 2/24/14, 12/4/14, and 12/22/14. That notice of restraint also contained the following, that any dog found in the act of worrying or wounding any person, livestock or fowl, may be killed. On 12/4/14, Ruth Lewis, childcare center owner, reported the dog suspected from Plinton growled and worried her in a picture at 2:15 PM. On 12/22/14, Ruth Lewis from the daycare school in Halifax complained again. On 12/22/14, Tia Quinn, Halifax resident and child chased by dog from Plinton. I have her telephone number here. I don't believe she's here. She described the dog as being a pit bull mix with a blue collar, and it was at the Winnetuxas preschool. On 12/14, as Ms. Calhoun indicated, she called me, and I returned the call to her and told her that the dog had been placed under a 14-day quarantine to take the animal off the street, also to allow the licensing authority to notify the owners that the license was due January 1st. On 12/22, a recall to Tia Quinn explained actions taken to keep the dog off the street and ensure no further threats will happen. Ms. Quinn reported the dog was very aggressive and frightening to her children. A year passed, and on... 12/9, a letter, excuse me, on 12/9 or 12/10, the selectman's assistant in Halifax sent the following. Jan Keegan sent the following to the selectman in Halifax. Jan Keegan came in to voice her concerns about the dog that lives in Plinton, right next door to the Winnetuxas Children's Place. While she was picking up daughter and other parents, picking up their children, the dog was pacing along the fence beside the area where the children play. Main concern was that the dog is very intimidating, and they are fearful of it, attacking a child or a parent while trying to get them into the car. There have been previous concerns with this dog in January 2015. Jen called Halifax Dispatch to have them contact the ACO. I contacted the ACO, who is going to follow up on this. Officer Sleep went to the school, and he waited until the children were in the building for their afternoon drop-off. He did not see the dog while he was there. Fast forward to a letter from the, actually, an email from Halifax Selectmen, Charles Seelig II, the town coordinator in Plinton. The email from Mr. Seelig to Mr. Dale states, "This situation attached appears to be a repeat from last winter, when the dog was leaving the property to annoy and at least students and teachers and parents at the Winnetuxas School just over the town line. Could your ACO take a look at the situation? I don't want anyone walking around the school property concerned that the dog will harass or attack anyone." An email to me from Dale Plow the same day. He states, "Hi, Frank, same problems last year. Could you check into this and let me know what you find?" On December 18th, in reference to the town coordinator, I've stated that I legally cannot take any further action in a prevailing situation where West Street, our town, meets East Street in Halifax. A transition line indiscernible to any dog that is familiar with signs. Plington does not have a leash law." On December 30th, Selectmen Seelig sent a letter to me filing a complaint. It's outlined in Section 10, disturbing the peace. On January 13th, Mr. Seelig and Ruth and Michael Wright of the Winnetucksat Children's Place forwarded to me a signed complaint that the dog constitutes a nuisance because it causes the following disturbances: entering a neighboring property and threatening and acting in a threatening manner. On January 11th, I placed a restraining order on the dog owned by Mr. and Mrs. Place, a 14-day restraining order for violation of Article 21, Section 2, being unlicensed, once again to take the dog off the streets. The dog was licensed the next day on January 12th. And I have proof that the animal also has been rabies inoculated. January 14th, the animal was placed under a 14-day restraining order pursuant to the complaint from Mr. Seelig, saying that he thought the animal was a nuisance or a dangerous dog. That, the second restraining order was a violation of Article 21, Section 10, disturbing the peace. And also that the above dog must be restrained within 12 hours per Article 21, Section 11. On January 15th, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen sent a certified letter to the concerned parties, complaints, and the animal control officer, requesting that they attend a public hearing to answer complaints about the dog. And that brings us up to date.
Questions from the places?
First of all, the dog's not vicious at all. He just, we don't let him run free.
Tell you what, we're going to come to that part. First is, I don't mean to interrupt, but any questions for Mr. Bush? You'll have a chance to present your case in a few minutes, all right? All right, questions?
For Frank?
No.
All right, so what I'm hearing is that this pup has repeatedly entered the neighboring property and repeatedly acted in a manner that, at least in some people's opinion, was a threatening manner.
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, you know, I do have a question.
There was a year in between the two complaints.
I thought that while we didn't have a leash law, and I've been looking for it, I can't find it, that we did have a requirement that the dog is under the owner's control at all times. Doesn't our bylaw?
We don't have that.
Didn't it say that? I thought it said that at one point. Did we change it?
I looked, I didn't see it as well, though we certainly have Section 10, which is disturbing the peace, nuisance by reason of biting, excessive barking, howling, or any other matter that disturbs the quiet of the public. And then there is Section 12 as well, the complaint of nuisance.
Okay.
And I think, I think that's probably the area we're talking about.
Yeah, I thought that there was something in there that said that the dog was required to be under the owner's.
So, I think next probably the Winnetucksat Children's Place. Would you all like to make comment, please?
I have a certain statement. My name is Ruth Neuwess, and I own and operate Winnetucksat Children's Place, which is a licensed preschool and childcare center located at 3 East Street in Halifax. The property is on the Plington Town Line, and we own property in Plington as well. My husband to my right is Michael Wright, and I reside next, and he and I reside next door at 5 East Street. The reason for this hearing is an ongoing situation with the neighbor's dog. The owners and their dog reside in Plington. The dog has entered our property many times over the years, and there have been several occasions that the dog has appeared during normal business hours and has become increasingly aggressive toward myself and children attending my school. He comes onto my property and roams around the fenced-in yard area, barking at the people contained within. Following us about the play yard. Supervision becomes challenging as children's reactions are unpredictable. Many times, I have made the decision to bring the children inside the building for ultimate safety. Personal access to the school has become a problem as well. The dog continues to remain on the property when transitions are taking place, approaching parents, children, family members, and caregivers during arrivals and departures. He barks constantly and appears threatening. There have been no incidences of injury at this point, and in attempting to avoid any type of injury, this is the reason for the complaint. We also have a dog, and she remains indoors at our residence for the entire school day. We have utilized an invisible fence for the purpose of training her to remain on our property. It was money well spent and has worked to our advantage. My husband has offered to work with the neighbors and their dog to assist in training and avoid future incidences. As of this point, the offer has not been accepted. As the situation compounded, subsequent calls were made to the Halifax Police and Plinton Police. Being on the town line has proven a problem, as there is no leash law in Plinton, and Halifax has no jurisdiction there. While working with the children, it is impossible for me to attend fully to this issue. I am unable to leave the children in my care, and the time-consuming distraction is upsetting and worsening. There have been many occasions where the dog has been witnessed on my property, either during business hours or not. The calls to animal control have not been made. The children in my care come first, and it is inconvenient at times to break for these calls. Last year, I was advised to write a letter of information to the Halifax Board of Selectmen with copies sent to the Plinton Board of Selectmen, the Plinton Chief of Police, the Plinton Animal Control Officer, and Halifax Chief of Police, and the Halifax Animal Control Officer. The letter dated January 6, 2015, provided information regarding the situation I encountered while the children and I were on my property outside the fenced-in yard area investigating a bird-related project we had done. The dog unexpectedly came around the corner and had false access to us all. I quickly ushered the children inside the gated area into the school building where we were safe. It shook me up quite a bit because of its potential. It's not just an injury from the dog I fear, but the reaction from the children, which is completely unpredictable and could result in a related injury. The same applies to any parent, family member, or caregiver who has the right to be on my property during business hours. Most recently, my licenser from the Department of Early Education and Care was engaged in a licensing study at my center. She witnessed the dog, his behavior, and my reaction, deciding to remove the children from our play yard and go back inside the building for ultimate safety. She agreed with my decision. This did not provide comfort, as I am committed to nature and our outdoor environment for the children and their development. We will not be captive while on our property or walking in our neighborhood by this animal. We should feel free to enjoy our property and surrounding area with or without the children at my school. I realize that it is not the dog's fault or responsibility, and do not wish for anything bad to happen to him or anyone else. I want to be clear. I do not wish to be here or want any child to develop a fear of dogs as a result of these encounters. I have to take the advice and necessary steps in avoidance. My business is paramount in this decision to make this complaint. And I thank you all for your time and your consideration.
Questions from the places first? Questions from, so can you describe the behavior that feels threatening to those involved?
It's the constant barking when we are in the play yard and the dog is outside the fenced-in play yard. The dog will follow the children around the fenced-in area wherever the children go. And I try to usher the kids away from the fence so that hands don't get poked through, so the kids don't have any sort of physical access to the dog. And in moving the children around the play yard, the dog will follow us around the fenced-in area. So then, I will decide to take the children indoors. Some of them have shown fear, and I don't want that to happen because we are dog people ourselves, and I just don't want that to occur. And then the bigger concern would be when the transitions are taking place and people are coming and going from the property, and they are not inside the fenced-in area. There have been continual barking, approaching parents at vehicles. Children, I have witnessed children screaming in the parking lot. And a grandmother in particular trying to corral these children into the car while the dog was barking. Whether or not the dog is aggressive toward these people in a physical way, I can't predict. I don't know what the children are going to do. And a big fear that I have is that a child may run away from a parent or myself, run into the street, that someone may fall and hurt themselves on my property. So, these are things that I've been considering, and this is the reason that we're here.
Any other testimony? Sir?
Yeah, Michael Wright. It's been a tricky situation. It's been going on for years. Everybody's been great. Police chiefs in both towns, dog catchers. And I'm trying to get along as well as you can with our neighbors, the places, and we've done pretty good. It's just a reoccurring thing. And here's the problem, I work 30 miles away. She's at school with the kids. You get a phone call. There's nothing I can do. Ed's working, nobody's home. The dog is free. So, it's real troubling that way. It's been difficult. And I'm not afraid of the dog. All I do is walk outside and the dog runs home. He'll stop, he'll turn, he'll put his tail up, he'll bristle, and I'll walk at him again, go home, and he'll go home. I'm not afraid of the dog. If it were just my wife and I, there would be no issue. The dog could come over anytime he wants. It's the children we're worried about and business. I can't say we've lost any parents, but people read this and they see it going on, say, maybe that's not a good school. So, that's worrisome. And, you know, it's just been a difficult process. And we're just trying to get all the help we can and get clear of this possible.
Places, any questions?
Yeah, the problem is, I talked to Mike a few times. We might work, we get the dog in all the time.
I don't work, since July, I don't work anymore. So, I am home more often now, and the dog is with me in the house.
And I promise you're going to have your chance to speak. At this part, it's simply questions about the testimony. All right, and then, Madam?
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Keegan. I'm a lifelong resident of the town of Halifax. I've had two children go through Ruth's school, one of which is currently still there. I myself have witnessed this dog on property on two occasions. In my opinion, on school property, that's two times too many. The first occasion that I witnessed this dog, and I did make a phone call myself to Halifax Police, was on February 24th of 2014. That particular incident was the one that Ruth was referencing when the dog was in the parking area during parent pickup. I myself had a child that was fearful to go out to the car, crying, along with the grandmother she mentioned getting her grandchild into the car. Both kids were in tears, did not want to go to the parking lot. I could not get the dog to leave the property. Perhaps he was excited because he saw the kids and all the people on property, so it wasn't as easy for me to escort the dog off. Regardless, for a three- and four-year-old, their perception of seeing a dog standing in a parking lot and not leaving barking is straight fear. That's unacceptable, in my opinion. It cannot be tolerated. Thankfully, that a child has not been hurt physically, but emotionally, every time they see this dog, it's fearful to them. My dog was afraid to go outside after that. We got through that, and then the most recent time, I believe, was in, on January 7th. Again, I was there, I called. That was the day the auditor was there. When I came for pickup, the dog was still in the area, walking the perimeter of the fence, continuing to bark. I could still hear the dog barking. I was able to get my daughter, although scared, into the car. I was able to photograph the dog, which I have with me now on her property line. He had made his way on the line, but he was still accessible to her yard. Again, not acceptable for school-aged children. There has to be a solution. This cannot continue. And again, I love dogs. I have had a dog my entire life, I currently do as a dog owner. I would want to know that my dog was safe and in my control, not out wandering, perhaps to get hit by a car or whatnot. But again, the first and foremost concern here are the children on that property, along with the parents picking up, and Ruth's business. You know, there's several preschools in town, all of great, yes. I chose Ruth's because of multiple, multiple referrals and friends and family that have gone there. I'll continue to refer people to her school. There should not be a deterrent for anyone to go to her school.
Questions? Anyone else?
I don't have any questions, no.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Place, your chance to present your case.
First, I know, I talked to Mike a few times with the dog getting out. I mean, at the time, me and my wife were both working. And my dog, first of all, I have two kids, five and two. And all my friends have kids, and the dog plays with them all through the yard. He loves them, he don't go anywhere. It seems like the problem is, is when he, he's by himself. He's one, he's a smart dog. He probably goes through all my screens, he finds a way out.
He unlocks sliders and opens sliding doors, like, he's Houdini. We should rename him Houdini.
Because he gets...
But he's, his most recent escape is the side panels on a window shaker. He has broken right through it. And it's, he's a big dog, it's about this big. And he gets through it and he jumps down, probably about 20 feet down from the window to the ground. And he just, he wants to be with people, is what it is. He's a big fat lapdog, is what he is. Most guard dogs, they'll at night sit on the end of your bed, face the door, they watch the door, they guard you. This dog crawls under the covers, to the bottom of the bed, and sleeps at your feet, under the blankets. Like, he's a big fat lapdog. He just wants to be with people. I understand he's a pit bull. I'm not stupid, I know, you know? And we're doing our best to keep him boarded in the house when we leave. We make sure all windows are locked when we leave. We've now got wooden poles and all the sliders. We're going to figure something for the window shakers, but we're taking everything as he escapes through that, we're maintaining it. I just can't predict what his next escape route is going to be.
I'm not arguing how the dog behaves at home. He could be and probably is the most loving dog in their home. My argument is, when he's on the property, the children there do not know this dog. Therefore, he is fearful, they're fearful of this dog. And we don't know how he may react to a strange child. Regardless of the breed, they're afraid of this strange dog. The other thing is, I understand Plinton does not have a leash law, but Halifax does. So, once this dog crosses into Halifax, he's now has to be under the rules and regulations of the town of Halifax, because we do have leash law that we do enforce.
Do you want to start? I'll start.
Personally, I think this has been going on way too long, and...
Oh, sorry, hold on.
Okay, do you have to do something else first?
This is, so, any, we're still in the collecting evidence phase. Anything else anyone wants to say for or against the situation? Anything we want to ask or say?
I just wanted to say something. My son is a student at Ruth's school as well. I live in Plington.
Your name, please?
Trina Player. I live in Plington. We have two dogs. My son has never been afraid of dogs. We've had them since he was born. But he has, I haven't seen the dog, I haven't witnessed this, but he's come home and he's talked about it, and he does express fear about this too. So, for a child who's grown up with dogs, for him to be afraid, it's got to be something.
And one more thing, it is unacceptable for any dog to go on school property in Halifax. We will not tolerate it.
Sir?
My name is Joshua Loes. My daughter goes to Ruth's school. And we chose Ruth's school after many referrals as well, as the lady next to me had said. And we just thought it was a great place because she gets the kids outside into nature. I've never heard of another early childhood development school where a kid digs up an owl pellet, and the teacher knows what it is and can tell them about the owl and how the pellet gets there. And the kids are all just completely engulfed in the moment. And you lose some of that when she's afraid and has to take them inside. So, it's not just the kids losing out, it's her business, it's who she is, it's what she does. And it's being restricted by something that's totally out of her control. But it's in the control and it's within the power of the town to make a decision. But it's in the control and it's within the power of the town to make a decision. It could be the best dog in the world, I don't think that's necessarily the argument of if it's a bad dog or not. It's just the taking away from someone else's ability to teach kids, to get them to love nature. It just seems like there has to be an answer to that problem.
Mr. Wright?
Here's the problem, it's just simple, I mean, the dog's not under control. And call and call and call and the dog doesn't come home. He's out running around. You know, that's out of control. It just needs to be trained a little bit, work a little bit at that.
Anyone else?
Just to quick echo these sentiments, my name is Jonathan Seelig, I'm a Halifax resident. My three children have gone to the Winnetux's at school, my third is currently enrolled. And I haven't witnessed, I haven't been there to witness anything, but I just wanted to kind of echo the sentiments of Ruth and Mike. They are, they are huge animal people. Like, they, they love animals and again, to echo what this gentleman said, the reason I chose that school is because nature is such a big part of what they teach. So for them to have to do this, I know, I know their hand is tied.
Anyone else? Any last things? Okay, so, I entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of this hearing.
So much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So now we're at the deliberate and decide phase. We have two issues to do. First is whether there is a violation and then if so, what action, if any, should be taken. So that's where we're at.
Okay, all right, well, I'll say what I was gonna say before, I feel like this has gone on way too long. I'm sure you're taking this seriously, but this is a huge problem. And for me personally, I'm not willing to tolerate this any longer. My kids went to Ruthie's school too, they loved it. I concur with everything you guys have said, it's a wonderful school, the kids have a great experience there, and your dog is impacting their experience as well as Ruthie's business and that is completely inappropriate. So I would order, or my recommendation would be to have the dog ordered restrained all the time and that, and let them know that if the dog gets out again, he could be shot. Because it's not acceptable.
If my dog had been warned that he can be shot...
My dog is shot.
If he is out on a leash, it will be...
You're not doing what you need to do.
No, good. I will do what I have to do.
I don't know.
My dog is shot, there will be problems, I don't care, I'll deal with it.
Your dog's a problem now and it's not fair to your neighbors...
I understand that.
That you don't have the dog under control. And it's your responsibility...
We do have a control now, we lock the doors.
We have a leash.
How do you have a dog under control?
We have a leash, we put on a leash, he gets...
Well, we have an incident two weeks ago. What happened again?
We're in the part of the hearing where we sort of deliberate, we'll save you a chance at the end.
Okay, well, that's my recommendation, that the dog is ordered permanently restrained.
If a cow gets loose in Plimpton, you guys restrain that too?
It's our turn.
Yeah, he needs to be controlled somehow. I have three dogs, I have a six-foot fence around a small portion. This is where they can go out and do their business and spend a little time outside. If they're out in the larger yard, they are with me and usually they're on a leash. It's just, you have to, you know, be considerate and, and there is a threat. And it would just be devastating to have to do something to the dog. It's just, it'd be devastating for you, it'd be devastating for me. And I wish that you would keep him under better control and make firm, positive steps. I mean, buy a six-foot dog kennel.
I don't see why you don't, we can give a number. If the dog ever gives us a call, we come over and get the dog. You know what I mean? Most neighbors come over and put the dog back on the chain, you know?
The male lady has no problem coming into, I got unwrapping the dog from the chain around the tree. She's done it several times that I just found out.
We'll give you another chance on the way.
I just, I don't think it's your neighbor's responsibility to control your dog.
All right. This is hard. I've been a doggy advocate for 42 and a half years and every time I can err on the side of the dog, but I, in terms of the issues before us, whether there has been a violation, I think by the bylaws and the state laws, there's no doubt that this pup has been a nuisance and has disturbed the peace. In terms of remedies, I agree with my colleagues, I think if you are, you must find a way to better restrain the dog. I lived with a dog who used to jump out second-story screens and I actually used to have to budget a couple thousand dollars a year with the screens because he jumped out of the second story all the time. Thank God, this is 40 years ago and it's a town where there wasn't a leash law as well. The dog was a wild man and actually, maybe like your dog, all he wanted to do was go out and play and I get that. On the other hand, I think you are flirting with a legal catastrophe with this puppy over there at the school. I have seen situation after situation where little kids rightly or wrongly perceive a threat and forever are injured and afraid of dogs. I think you have a real tough situation on your hand, but hands, and I am going to agree that we, the board of selectmen, have to ask you to permanently restrain the dog. I know that's going to be hard, whether in visible fence or more training or more barricades. It's hard when dogs want to get out and play and run, that's what they want to do. But, you know, he's your dog, he's causing a nuisance and you're gonna have to find a way to deal with it. One of the problems is, I think if we vote that you have to permanently restrain the dog, if there are continued problems, you're leaving yourself at risk for fines and even We absolutely don't want to get to the point of the recommendation of an animal being destroyed. So I guess we have to, next is entertaining a couple of motions and I guess I would make a motion that we find that this pup has been a nuisance and has been disturbing the peace. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think I want to just take a moment and check with the animal control officers. I think my next motion would be that this board recommends that the dog be permanently restrained. Frank, does that feel like a reasonable approach?
Yes, sir. I don't believe the dog is a dangerous dog, but it definitely is a nuisance dog. Chapter 140, section 174E gives qualifications for confinement restrictions and chain or tethering. And they give in detail what is required in order to successfully fulfill that. In terms of tethering, in terms of trolley as it's called. I can send that over to you.
Noreen, do you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, I think they, it's not the dog, it's the responsibility of the owner to keep the dog contained. If he does come over in Halifax, we will impound the dog again. We will continue to fine or charge an impound fee. I cannot give them, the fines that I would give the Halifax residents if they allowed their animal to run loose, which is, you know, you are fined, you're required to have a leash law, you should have a leash law. If the dog is running loose, it's a fine. If the dog doesn't have a license, it's a fine. If the dog continues to do it, it's considered public nuisance. And then a dog hearing and then we'll figure out the determination of the dog. That's how we do it in the town of Halifax.
So a couple of things I want to just mention about enforcement. The blurb from Cop, Owner and Page from 2014 that we received on this makes note that if the owner or the keeper of the dog violates the order that we decide on, the dog is subject to seizure and impoundment by the animal control officer and the owner is subject to criminal penalties and fines. I do want to mention that there is an appellate process that the owner or the keeper of the dog can certainly appeal this board's decision by filing an appeal at the local district court within 10 days of the issuance of the order. So I make a motion, we have decided that there has been an infraction of the rules and we are suggesting the remedy of asking the places to keep their dog permanently restrained. So that's a motion, I guess.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. So that's effective immediately?
Effective immediately, we will send a certified letter saying the same. I, again, I fully recognize the dilemma you're in. I think there have been repeated complaints and I, for your own protection and for the dog's protection, I fervently hope you're able to find ways to keep the pup under control. Any last words, say this, from anyone?
No. It's a shame, it's a shame that it's come to this, but I just hope that the dog is restrained and I have no doubt the dog is a nice dog and great with your family, but, you know, I just feel like we don't, we don't have an option. We have to do what's best for the community and your neighbors.
All right, so the dog hearing is closed. Thank you everyone for coming, good luck to the places and thank you very much for the people that came forward to try to remedy.
Sure. Listen, I know that was hard for you. No, this is just...
So it wasn't hard for you?
No.
Okay. So we were in executive session, so we've already been at this for quite a while, but we got a few more items to go. Let's see if we can whizz through most of this. Any solar updates?
None today, none this week.
Okay. Board priority and goals, what should talk about?
Oh, you know what? Interesting, we do have a compact meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock and I got an email today from, oh, what's her name?
Sharon, Shelley?
No, not Shelley, about the, Pam Coker, that we are eligible to apply for an IT grant because we participated in the compact program. So I emailed this stuff for you to check it out, to see what, what we could do with that IT grant money. I don't know if it's something we could apply for the software that we talked about to tie the townhouse together or other things.
That's a big help. When did you email?
This afternoon. Okay.
I may not have got...
Not to be overly monetary, but how much?
Don't know.
Did we finally wear you guys out? Oh, we wore her out.
Thank you, Frank, very much. I appreciate all your time on that.
That describes the methods of restraint, legal methods.
Okay.
They have a trolley for the animal, but it's not legal, the way they have it.
So you can follow up on that and make sure they...
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm going to get, actually, back to that, I will get a certified letter out tomorrow.
Thank you, Frank.
Coffee, Frank and Halifax and you guys.
Perfect.
All right, so...
Okay, so I don't know the size of the grant, any of the details about what we could apply for, but pretty exciting news.
It is, that's very exciting news.
Very cool, we love free money.
It's actually, there is that cascading effect of showing some merit.
I know, it's like, once you, yeah, make an effort, they say, here, take more, take more money.
Despite the fact that we've already gotten grants, we can get this one.
Yeah. Well, they offered it to us because we'd apply for these other grants.
That's terrific.
So, yahoo, keep it coming.
So actually, you'll have, we'll have much more to record next week after meeting with the committee tomorrow night. Public safety?
We have a meeting Wednesday at 6 o'clock. The full board of selectmen will be joining us. Hopefully, we'll be able to settle on a consultant to help us with the project, but as it turns out, we're having a bit of a slowdown in receiving applications from the consultants.
Yeah, no returns yet.
That's a bummer.
Yeah.
I mean, 20 inquiries, but no proposals yet.
We did...
No being like zero?
Like zero. And 20 went out, I mean, 20 inquiries and follow-up phone calls or emails with a half a dozen or so. So I'm not, I'm not sure why, but no one's indicated why, they just haven't responded to it.
Well, then what's the point in us all meeting?
Well, that's...
That's your follow-up?
Yeah. We formed a subcommittee, we formed a subcommittee to preview these people, these companies. They're supposed to meet tomorrow afternoon. We actually have to appoint them, but I think the paperwork is there in the correspondence file. If they don't have anything tomorrow afternoon, they'll let me know, I'll let you know and we'll cancel that part of it.
Perfect. So by my, only have three meetings next to...
In which case, I guess we have to push it out to maybe the 17th. I was kind of hoping...
Unfortunately, I, that's the one, I can't be here, but there would be two of you, so you can move forward.
Well, you can, I thought you couldn't be here the 10th.
Or the 7th, forgive me. That's correct, I can't be here the 10th.
So you could be here the 17th.
Yes, ma'am.
We could push it out to the 17th.
Let's see, I only have two meetings otherwise. You guys think that we meet Monday night every once in a while and that's it, it tends to be every night of the week.
I'm sorry, Christine, are you saying you cannot meet on the 17th?
I can, I can be there.
So we can push it through the 17th?
Yep.
Although I was really hoping for a week off.
Why?
Why?
Because a meeting or two every night is...
Okay. All right, are we up, I think we're up to town coordinator?
Yeah. Housekeeping from last June, for some reason, we overlooked signing these contract for the burial agent and manager of the transfer station. So as a housekeeping measure, it could be, there's two copies of each.
Last June?
Yeah, for this discipline.
So all three of us were...
Yeah, yeah, everybody was.
Board one.
Yeah, it just, I mean, it's one of those things that just got overlooked as far as the contract goes and that will run until June of this year. And the auditors are looking for it, they make sure you've got contracts for everybody and apparently that one didn't get signed.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Dates to remember, we're meeting every Monday night except President's birthday. Next week, we will have a discussion, Roxanne, the veterans' agent, asked for some discussion, we'll talk about the veterans memorial. A few other odds and ends, if people haven't done it yet, I think there's a couple weeks left, I'm not sure exactly how much, for the open space survey. It would be really, really worthwhile for everyone in town to respond to that survey so open space will have a sense of the priorities in town. There are hard copies here in the library, probably a couple of other places. There is an online Survey Monkey version and if anyone needs...
And it's quick and easy to do, right? You did it.
Under 10 minutes. If anyone needs the, I don't have with me the way to get there, but if you email me, I'm glad to get that to you. Now, correspondence, I will certainly yield the floor momentarily. A couple of things I wanted to mention in correspondence, I'm not sure if you guys got it, there is, was an email about the legislative breakfast meetings. These are wonderful. Couple of local legislators, selectmen come, hash out, the legislators tell us of their problems, we tell them of our problems, it is a direct link to what's happening. So the most local one next is February 26th, which is probably, I'm afraid, a weekday.
Yeah, probably.
Usually on Fridays.
Hanover, Hannover?
Oh darn, that's in Hanover and I have to be away that day. Well, I'm gonna take a look at this, I'll get a copy of each of these to you, I wouldn't have a trouble... I wouldn't have a trouble traveling even up to Framingham for one. I'll get your copy by next week.
Perfect.
All right, so that's the... I'm so sorry. These are the phone calls from people commenting on solar. It's the way...
Yeah.
It is.
Sounds like you had to pay the credit card or something.
These are local numbers. You can just tell.
I don't think they're calling you about solar.
I don't think I pulled that off.
I can even tell what they're going to say, what their problem's going to be. All right. Lastly, we have a town report, we need to write a port report for town, for the annual town report. I think that's due February 22. And, right?
I sent you all a memo.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, and I think we all had it. So one of us needs to take this on. One year, we were able to dump that on Dale.
Yeah. Two years?
I was going to say, I thought that's what we did this year.
Would you be willing to make a first crack at it?
Yeah, would you be willing to email me what you think the high points of the last year were for the board? I mean, I can wing it, but, you know, what the, what the high points were in last, during last year's board?
God, I don't remember any high points.
I came along.
Low points?
Oh, three came. Three's definitely up. Christine came. Those two high points.
Yeah, we can get, we can look over things. We can do our part, but I'm not sure what happened before that.
Thank you. So actually, if people want to do the Open Space Survey, Survey Monkey, it's surveymonkey.com/r/...
Five, two.
Five, two, X, Y, K, P, N. That probably means something. Okay, that's that. Correspondence.
Okay, correspondence. We have some appointments to make. Bob Carling to the Consultant Review Committee until resolved. Robert Jacobson to the Consultant Review Committee until resolved. And Harry Weichel to the Consultant Review Committee until resolved.
Dissolved.
Dissolved. Did I say resolved?
Yes.
Oh, dissolved, sorry. Did I say dissolve that, or resolve that, all of them?
Yeah.
Which we may actually be on Wednesday, but maybe it'll be a week longer.
So I make a motion, these three gentlemen be appointed to this committee until dissolved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Okay, so from Triad, Plimpton and Carver Regional, Dear Chief, on behalf of the members of the Plimpton and Carver Triad, I would like to thank you for your continued support of our program. Thank you for coordinating a great community safety forum for our members on Friday, January 15. Thank you for arranging to have Officer Dana Smith discuss safety measures that our members can take with them out in the community. The Triad program is all about protecting our most valuable citizens. And for that, I thank Officer Smith for doing an outstanding presentation. Officer Brent Peterson also did an outstanding presentation on the opioid crisis in our community. Personally, I've learned a great deal and know that seniors have spoken highly of both officers' presentations. Having the teamwork approach at the police department was reassuring to everyone. We know that the department is on top of what goes on around town. Thank you for caring so much for Triad community and especially our Little Woodlands community. From Janine Eaton, chairperson of Plimpton and Carver Triad. Very nice.
Very nice.
Great job to the officers and the chief.
Well done.
Well done is right. Okay, from Best Buddy Challenge, this is information about their 17th Annual Best Buddies Challenge, which is Saturday, June 4. And they do go through part of Plimpton, don't they, 58? Let's see, Plimpton, Colchester, Mayflower, 58.
And we have authorized that each year?
Yes, I believe we have authorized that each year. So I don't know if we want to authorize it, you know, dependent on...
The other boards and committees?
The other boards, Jim and Police and Fire.
So I make a motion, we authorize this dependent on the other boards and committees. All those in favor?
Aye. Okay, from Xfinity, they gave us the Form 500 complaint data form. This is what's used when people file complaints. So that's just for our records. All right, from, let's see. Plimpton Girl Scout troop would like permission to hold a cookie booth drive-through. Oh, that's so cute. At the Plimpton Town Hall parking lot on Friday, February 5, after school until 5:00 PM. And then, let's see. For the past two years, with the board of selectmen's permission, the Plimpton Girl Scout troop created and maintained a small community garden in the land area between the parking lots in front of the fire department and library. Chief Borsari has been very generous to donate water connections so the girls could water the gardens throughout the growing season. The girls in our troop decided they'd like to continue the community garden again this year and asked if I would write on their behalf to submit a request for permission to continue growing our garden this spring and summer. And these are both from Karen Hawey.
Love both projects. Thrilled they're happening. And make a motion that we approve these pending approval from all the other boards.
Yeah, it looks like Jimmy's already signed off on both of these. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Love that little garden. Love those kids out there doing that.
Very nice.
We are a right-to-found community.
Boy, you just don't let that go, do you? All right. From the Plimpton Halifax Express, locals hashed it out. Was that a pun hash?
I don't write.
She got it, she got it!
Yeah, so that was a very long article. And also in here, it looks like dog licenses are now available. The town clerk, Tara Shaw, has announced that according to the Town of Plimpton municipal bylaws, all dogs over the age of six months in Plimpton must be licensed between January 1 and December 31. So call the town clerk if you've got any questions on that. Nice pictures. I think that was pretty much it on Plimpton, but I think that was probably enough. All right. Oh, no, and then, oh, Debbie Batson, let's see, seniors treated to soup and sandwich lunch. So more than 30 seniors came out for a cold winter day for soup and sandwiches at the Plimpton Public Library. Very nice. All right, that's all I got, correspondence. We already voted this. We just have to sign it. And then, we need to sign those contracts.
Okay, so this is the, that's the signed pile with this one is the thing that Dale just mentioned.
Right. That's the 14th one. Best Buddies.
So you have those to sign.
And you, oh, I need to sign this and this. That's it go.
And that can go that way.
Yep.
So my fault, I forgot about the executive session minutes from last week during executive session.
If we don't have amendments, we can...
I do.
Okay. Well, we're going to have an executive session next week.
We are.
So why don't we just do that?
Seems like we have those everywhere.
I know, it'd be nice when we don't.
All right, so we have two sets of minutes, January 11. I, hmm, I had no...
There's nothing. I had, sorry, three. Under animal control complaint, the officer, animal control officer, Mr. Bush, applied for a 14-day restraining. Didn't he order a 14-day?
Good.
Or initiated a 14-day restraining, something like that?
Sounds good.
Okay, so initiated. And then, I just had change where you've got MLK. I just have it changed to Martin Luther King.
Okay.
That's it.
Picky, picky.
Well, I mean, it just kind of trivializes Martin Luther King.
Good, great. All right, so I make a motion to accept the January 11 minutes as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're up to January 25. No. Wow. I had just the first bullet point down at the bottom where it says Subcommittee for the Process of Hiring. They're not hiring an OPM yet. They're hiring a consultant.
Yep.
Right there.
And I had on the vote, make for the Community Compact Committee until dissolved. Just add until dissolved on that.
Okay. Make a motion, the January 25 minutes be accepted as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think we're at the place for last words.
Nope, two more minutes. And I've got some down here, too. Oh, those are public safety?
Yeah. This is the same as usual?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I make a motion, these minutes for the public safety building committee be approved as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, if I can find my agenda, let me just make sure we haven't missed anything. I think we came pretty close. Okay, any last words?
No. No, well, I just would say, you know, thank you to everyone that, you know, for the phone calls and emails. It's nice that people are sharing their opinions and know that we're accessible and, you know, we're...
We are accessible.
We're available.
Good meeting. Thank you, everyone, and a good week. We'll be back at it tomorrow night, actually. So I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.